The first one to order is June 23, 2016, 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is the call to order. Second is the purpose of the public hearing is for the citizens' comment. Bill 2016-16, an ordinance number 930, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting an annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017. At this time, we will give you any opportunity, any citizens that would like to come up and ask about, ask questions about the budget or the tax rate. You already gave it away. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Donna Brooks, 7315 Chester Road. Am I just gonna have my comments, or am I gonna get to ask questions and somebody's gonna answer?
Well, this, in the public hearing, it's more or less for you to make any statement. I guess if anybody, nothing's gonna stop anybody from asking, but we probably more opportunities. If you'll just state your questions, then maybe we could address them during the actual agenda item.
Okay.
Mayor, this first one will be on the budget only.
And this is only, yeah, tax rate. We're having two different public hearings, so this is only comments on the budget.
Okay. I don't really have a comment about revenue, except to say that it's been budgeted $184,000 less than we took in this year, and that's because we had a grant that we're not gonna get again for $186,000. On employee-related expenses, on the line item 110 salaries, it's going up $273,209, which is 11.23% increase from what we spent this year. The budget's actually set up with, with the percentages based on the budget year over year. Mine is on what the projected actual is. So that's a difference of $273,209, and I identified part of it, but I couldn't identify all of it. The codes director is a new position, $69,353. A part-time codes person, $17,500. The K-9 officer was moved from the drug fund to the general fund. That's $37,119. There was a 2% COLA, and I just took 2% of the actual for this year, so this may be a little bit off, $43,175. That totals $167,147. There is a difference of $106,000 that I'd like to know what that is. There was an increase on incentive pay from $17,655 to $30,000, which is a 41% increase. I would like to know what that is. To tell you the truth, I don't know what incentive pay is, so. And on the medical, it went up $116,993, which is almost a 25% increase. So I'd like to know those things. On operating expenses, dues went up 44%, tuition went up 31%, office supplies 23%. Operating, office supplies. Operating supplies went up 21%. Those are not significant number, amounts of dollars, almost $10,000. But the percentage of increases are significant. Clothing and uniforms went from $15,814 to $47,000, which is a 66% increase. Firearms supplies went from $3,460 to $8,000, which is a 50, almost 57%. Gas and oil went from $68,740 to $100,000, which is $31,000. And if we're just budgeting that because we think gas will go up, I'm fine with that. But if you think, if you're planning on spending more on gas and oil because of changes in what we're doing, I'd like to know what that is. The debt restructure, the payment out of the general fund is $107,140. The balance of the bond payment will be $38,590 from state street aid and $104,451 from the facilities fund. What I would like to know is why we're using state street aid, even if it's legal, to pay the debt restructure. And I can't spell today. It's not really the grant totals, it's the grand total. The total unassigned expenses went up $549,024 for 11.76% increase, and the revenue went down 3.52%. This year, we're projected to take in $1,306,421 more than we spent. All of this is unassigned revenue. Next year, we're gonna take in $572,875 more than we have budgeted to spend. And none of the things on the project list, I don't think, are in the budget already. So if we're trying to save the rest of our stabilization fund, that doesn't leave much room for us to get any of that project stuff. The only other question I have is, in the forecasted cash flow, the beginning cash balance is $1,808,714, and I would like to know what is the amount that is the unassigned fund portion of that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I will, no other citizens want to come forward? If I can get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Say.
Okay, first and second, meetings adjourned. Second, public hearing is June 23, 2016, and it's 7:07. The purpose of the public hearing is for citizens' comments on Section 9 of Bill 2016-16, an ordinance number 930, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting an annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017. If anybody would like to talk on the tax rate, this would be the opportunity. Okay, with that being said, we'll go ahead and close. You wanna make a motion?
Say.
Okay, first and second. And we have adjourned that meeting. And that brings us to the Board of Commissioners, special called meeting. For the record, it's June 23, 2016, and it is now 7:09. First item of business is called to order. Second, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to?
To approve.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion. Okay, Mr. Darty, could you, at this time, try to address and answer some of these questions?
You need to take a vote on that.
Huh?
Need to take a vote on the approval of the agenda.
Oh, gotta have myself. Okay, we got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Got too excited. Okay, that will bring us to old business, discuss and take action on second and final reading of Bill 2016-17, an ordinance number 931, an ordinance for amendment to the city of Fairview's Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2015-2016, Budget History Village. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of the improvements to history villages.
Move to approve.
Say.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and that brings us to the second item, B, discuss and take action on second and final reading of 2016 dash, I'm sure that meant to be 17, right?
Yes.
Yes. Is it right? Is it 2016? Oh, 16. Okay. I looked at 17 up there, sorry.
That's your budget order.
Yeah, okay. I'll start again. Discuss and take action on second and final reading of Bill 2016-16, an ordinance number 930, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting an annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Say.
First and second discussion. Now we're back to, if you wanna address some of these issues.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first viewing I've had of this document. I can go down and give a short answer, but I'd be more than happy to provide detailed information. I can make it public. I can email it to Ms. Brooks, or I can email it to wherever. I just, I just don't wanna misquote without going back, and these are not my figures, and I don't want to misquote. But I can go down through here and tell you what I think it is.
Okay. Well, if you will, I mean, just especially, I mean, some of the salary stuff, you probably can answer, and, you know, go down through what you can, and then I think that's a great idea. If you'll just make sure Ms. Brooks gets a copy, and then if you wanna give it to anybody else, that's fine, too.
Sure.
Because she's raising interesting questions to me, so let's, if you know, you know, something that you can guide us.
As far as the projected and proposed, you know, that is correct. But we also had quite a bit less in the budget for revenue last year. I have no, I don't think there's a question on that revenue. I'm gonna have to remember. Do y'all recall what the question was? Was there a question on that, on the revenue?
No, she just made a comment.
Okay. As far as the salaries, the biggest thing I don't see in there is the, the fire safer grant that did pay for a half a year of three firemen's salaries. I'll have to go back and look and see where the numbers differentiate on these other items. As far as the city manager salary, that was brought up in one of our meetings. That is, you know, a budget amendment, it can easily address that. It's kind of, you know, we really don't know what that salary's gonna be. Now, the incentive pay is the volunteer fireman and the volunteer, and the auxiliary police. And we just really were trying to get that back to where we could, we could start really utilizing that service more. I don't know if we'll hit 30,000, but I know the police, the fire department really needs some help, and they're, they're needing some funds in that area. As far as the medical, our budget was 370,000. She, you know, of course, she went by projections, so what, to me, that's good. We came in under projections. We wanted to, with, with increases in health insurance, we wanted to stay in, try to at least provide as good a plan as we had the previous year. And we, we have been able to do that. If we'd have stayed with the same firm, and had, we, Tim pulled a rabbit out of his hat, and we're back with Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, to have the same policy we had last year, it was gonna cost the city $135,000 in additional funds for the same policy. So we, Tim worked very hard to get the city the best policy under the budgeted amount.
Tom, can I just go back and ask a question?
Yes.
K-9 officer, 37, 119, was that moved from the drug fund to the general fund?
Yes.
Is it supposed to come out of the general fund, or is it not supposed to come out of the drug fund?
Yes, we moved it back to the general fund this budget year.
Why'd we do that?
Because our drug fund was getting, wanted to build that back up, and also because we had cash available in the general fund.
Okay, I was just under the impression that it had to come out of the drug fund?
It had not prior to last year. Membership dues, we cut way back on a lot of our training.
Hang on, one second.
I wanted to stop before we go any further, but I have some questions about the employee-related expenses. On the, although it says we're adding one fireman, by virtue of us losing the grant money for three other positions, essentially, the city's absorbing now, in this budget, four full-time salaries for four additional, or four firemen.
Correct.
I mean, grant money is great, and it's great that the fire department has the ability to, to get help through grants, but when those grants go away, it basically leaves the city. Now, we're, we're not really adding one fireman, we're adding four firemen, essentially. I mean, in terms of the money. And, I mean, that's, that's concerning to me. I mean, I was looking at this budget more of a status quo type budget, and if we're gonna absorb those salaries, then we need to find places to cut elsewhere. And from what I've seen, just after looking over the numbers, and again, I'm looking at the numbers that Ms. Brooks prepared on her sheet, it looks like we're, in terms of revenue, we're going down, in terms of expenses, we're going up. And that's not really the shift that I was wanting to see in this budget.
Well, I'm, I don't, like I said, this is the first time I've seen this document. I'm showing a surplus in general fund of $737,285. I think that's a very conservative number. Yes.
Wait, can we put, like, to your point, and can you put that kinda where we could see, like, just when you're, not the whole thing, but like, when you're answering this question, if we could put it up on the screen?
Sure.
And in fairness, Ms. Brooks, I think she pulled these numbers from your, from the budget.
Just the unassigned. If I, if you think you're referencing those, the general fund, you might draw the line a little.
I guess my point is, if I'd have had this information earlier, it would've been much easier to address. You know, this is the second reading, the budget has been in everybody's hands for almost two weeks, and I, I feel like that we're not going in the wrong direction. I feel like we'll have a surplus of a million at least next year. I feel like we're going in the right direction. If, like I said, we can go down through this, and I'm more than happy to give it, if this is going to stop the second reading for any reason, I feel like that's, well, I will keep my thoughts to myself on that.
Well, and I don't think we're necessarily, I just think it's a good opportunity to answer, and I realize you just got it like we just did. And, you know, if you can answer some of these general questions, of course, this is our time, you know, if we do need to make any changes or differences. It's never final, that's why, you know, we have to have the second reading. So it's our time to figure out and ask questions. But if you just wanted to show who you were talking about, about your projections, I thought that would be good to have up, if you don't mind.
Right here. And of course, this is, this is the way the state wants it presented. You know, they look at it as our three funds, our general fund, our facilities fund, and our drug fund. So we have three here, and this is the way I have to present it to the state. You know, we, this is, this year's our first surplus for the city of Fairview since 2009. We should have, my estimate is 1.440672. Now, as far as getting into all the unassigned categories, it's not broken down this way. I would have to go back, and it's not a problem, I just can't do it right here on the spur I guess the only thing I have about, about the firemen is if, if we let anybody go, the grant, people can ask for their money back. So, you know, it was kinda in the, in the deal when we, when they gave us a grant, we're going to, we're, we're committed to providing a force, a fire for, a squad that is adequate to service our community. So, you know, yes.
And I'm not suggesting that we let anybody go, I'm suggesting that it's, it's just, it's what's created some of the inflation in the, in the salaries, is that now we're gonna be absorbing three additional firemen, and it's misleading a little bit to say, well, we're adding one fireman. And in tech, in the technical sense, we are adding one new position, but we're taking on four new salaries. And that's, you know, expanding the government and inflating that employee-related side of things. And all I'm suggesting is, is that if we're gonna add those, or keep those positions, then we're gonna have to find places to cut elsewhere. And it seems like we've not done that, we're continuing to just add stuff to the, to the mix here, especially on the employer-related side. This isn't new news to you or anyone else, I've been talking about this for over a year. I think I talked about it at the last meeting, that we're continuing to expand on the employer-related side of things, and we're not finding ways to either cut on the expenditures or increase revenue. And that's concerning to me, that's all I'm saying. I'm not advocating that we, that we let anybody go. So we need to figure out how to pay for it and maintain a status quo budget, which was what I thought we intended on doing this year. And we, and we really haven't. I mean, we're, it's not, it's not the same budget as we had last year. I thought if we operated under the budget we had last year, I know things are gonna change, but if we operated under that budget and used the same mindset going into this year as we did last year, if we could get through one more year, we would have all of the things that we wanted to have accomplished at the end of this year done, and be in a much better position going into the next, next fiscal year.
And I feel like this budget does that. But like I said, if y'all want to adjust it, I really feel like we can do that, we can have another second reading. I just don't know.
What's the employee count number? Is it 56 compared to 62?
It's, it was 55 this year, 56 next year, it was 62.
What was it last year?
The year before the fiscal year we're in, it was 62.
Okay.
Fiscal year 15, and fiscal year 16, which is what we're in right now, just about.
And we counted those positions paid for by the safety grant, am I right?
Yes.
And the 62?
Yes.
So where did we lose the other positions at?
They were primarily, well, we didn't hire a codes director last year, we did not hire, we didn't, we did not retain some police positions. I think that's primarily.
That's two, but we're still looking at the difference of eight. I'm with you on the budget, but I'm just trying to balance some numbers in my head. We got four less people, and I understand you, we had, Wayne Vakes worked for zip, codes director, and we approved, added that, so.
Right.
The question still is, where do the, where do the other positions drop down to? Are you adding these positions unto the 55?
Yes, they've always been paid positions, they were just in a different line item other than the salary line item. They were coming out of the fire safety grant line item, which they were really, I mean, it's still all, all salaries.
Employee, yeah.
I just want for clarification, if we make changes tonight, it doesn't have to go back through a second, we can approve it with contingent of these changes being made. I just want clear, clarity that that's correct from the attorney.
Well, what I would do would be clearer if you just, yes, you could make it contingent upon whatever figure you come up with. In other words, what you'd have to do is approve it, put that figure in, and then, then republish your budget. I mean, your, your actual figures that go into the state. It might be easier to, since you've got the figures, to approve the budget as is and come back and, and.
Amend.
And amend it.
Yeah.
It'd be clearer. Because now, if you do it on a contingency, and you find something else, then you've got all that problem. But, you know, you can always amend your budget, you just can't spend money on, in next year's budget until you've approved this budget. So the fact that you approve it don't mean you can't change it, you just have to have
'Cause there's something that I would like to talk about with the board, just the fact that with the school facility tax not being, being able to be used for just anything in this very, now that Tom has consulted the attorney from the county and different, I think maybe Larry, that maybe we should start trying to figure out how we could put some money in the budget for the schools. So I just, and that's always something we can come back and amend, if that's in agreeance. But while we're here, I just wanted to talk about it. I'm thinking maybe, yes.
Yeah, I believe the time that we put it off, we put it off until this budget time, to bring it back up for discussion, am I right?
Yeah, well.
We're talking about banning uniforms and.
Well, this, this would be like, what I'm thinking about is like 1.5 cents that would go, allow us to be able to give to the schools of the tax.
I think the way we did it several years ago was so much per student.
Yeah, but I don't, we don't have that much money anymore, but.
But I'm just saying, look at, look at that, and see what it would come out to, that'd be fair for all the schools.
Yeah. So just, I mean, it's something we can put on agenda and discuss later. If we're gonna keep this budget like it is, then we can always do amendments. But just, you know, with talking to some of the different schools, and of course, they all are looking for, are y'all gonna be able to give us? They understood last year because we couldn't give anything out of the school facility tax. And I think they were aware of that. But now that Tom's done the research, and it's very limited what we can use it for, it's kinda making it more difficult. And the schools have a lot of needs that they have been coming forth, and I just think it's time for us to support education and put it in our budget. And we're holding on to the people's money, and so I'd like to see us use it for productive things that impact the future of Fairview. And I think our students are that. So I would like us to consider, you know, maybe taking it from the extra tax evenly across the things that we're getting at, like, it was the safety and the, oh, what else? The, the debt, what else? There's one other area, fire. Who's all getting the 15 cent of the five?
It's debt, future debt payment, parks and streets is where the 15 cents are going currently. It's totally different. I think probably what we'd have to do is come up with what we wanna spend the money and make sure, it's gotta be in collaboration with the county. So if, if, if y'all wanna spend it on something, and it's not, it's outside of the parameters that they have in, in our agreement, you know, I think if, as long as, what I don't wanna see is us spending on something that's, goes against the agreement, and down the road, we have to pay it back because it wasn't in agreement.
I don't believe you were. I don't believe you were talking about that.
No, I wasn't.
She was talking about the 15 cents extra that.
Are you talking about the, the property tax?
And the county don't have anything to say in that.
Okay.
Yeah, this would just be, this would be one of those designated things as long as we're still charging the, um, extra tax that they, it would be, they would be included in that dividing of the tax. And so, you know, I, I'm looking at maybe 1.5 because I know there was a community program that, um, Fairview Elementary in Westwood and it's an early childhood, um, trying to reach these, um, the children before they become in school. And it's a great program where it works with the parents. That is something they are looking for funding with. Also, you know, he had banned, I mean, I could just hold a list of, yeah, I think y'all spoke to the high school and they have, um, press box or something that they, so we have nothing to give right now and because we've learned that the school facility tax is very limited and it, um, so I'm just looking for a way that, um, that if people are still paying this higher tax, then, you know, let's give back to the community and so let's budget it into, um, our budget.
Mayor, could I say something about the?
Yes.
Facilities tax, it may not be as limited as, as, as you really think. If you look back at the statute that, that created this, the county is extremely limited. The counties, uh, it says specifically that the county will not expend the portion that they have for anything, just to make it simple, other than bricks and mortar for schools. Now, it does say that the, uh, portion that the municipalities have, that they can use for what is deemed a quote, "public purpose." The limiting factor in that is we have in our local agreement with the county that we won't spend that money for a public purpose or anything else unless they agree, like they did the library. The, if the city had something that they considered was a good, adequate public purpose and have a finance public purpose and have a resolution to the county board saying, "We have determined that such and such meets our criteria." And it, then it goes to the county and if they agree with it, then you can, can spend it. But it's, it's gonna be, it is limited as to what you can spend it on. But the city is not as limited as the, as the county would be, uh, but you have to get the county's agreement with, with what you have. The best way to do that's with a resolution.
Okay, cause that's, that's kinda not what I took from the email that, you know, and that was just off of you talking to the attorneys. It was a while back.
We looked, we looked into it. You actually found some of the money to begin with several years ago that was coming out. We didn't know, it was funds sitting there. And when I looked into it that time, basically it was, we could do it on anything pertaining to growth or improvement in the school system. If we stepped outside that and said, "We wanna build something out here on Main Street," that's when we'd have to go back to the county.
But you'd have to go to the county anyway because your interlocal agreement says that you won't spend any of those funds without their agreement. Now, like for example, the computer thing that you had, that's probably something they would vote, would vote for. Can't speak for the county, not trying to.
Right.
But if this board sent a resolution down there saying you want to spend X number of dollars for such and such, the board of the city of Fairview thinks this is a public purpose, we need your agreement. They vote on it, they agree, then you can spend it.
So it's wise, it's much wider.
Okay, well, that, that doesn't put our hands, um, we're not so handicapped if you, if that's the process. And that's what I was scared of. I mean, part of this is, I want us to get in the right place. I want our budget to, you know, to have this all, you know, stay on the course, but I don't wanna hold on to the people's money. And I want us still to get to the place where if we are having to, that's why we did a wish list versus we're gonna do every single thing. Because we know the most important thing in this budget is to, you know, build our reserves back and continue to fix the problem for the future. So, but I just really wanted to make sure, and we got some great projects and I hope we get to them all, but if we were, while we were at this point, I wanted to try to give back to the schools. But if it's, all it is is drawing up a resolution and having to get the county to approve it, then we can probably hold off one more year.
Mayor, the, the vice mayor is correct. Uh, it has to be a public purpose that, but that public purpose has to be in relation to growth, blah, 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 blah.
School education.
Okay. Well, not to take up all the time on that, but if we wanna amend this, um, budget, I guess we could take a look at it, maybe get some more information from the schools on what they're actually wanting and go from there.
I don't know if you have basically anything else to say. I just thought something out there that, for Larry's suggestion, possibly approve it tonight and come back with any, and give Tom an opportunity to ask, answer some of these questions because there's a few questions there that are good, good questions actually and just get that back to us and maybe to Don. And maybe we could work on it between now and the next meeting that we have. Just a thought.
Okay, um, did you have anything, Commissioner Bissell?
Well, I'm not, I guess I'd planned to say this in the tax rate discussion, but I think it's applicable now. I'm, I'm all for us helping the schools. That's, that's, I've always voted for that and, and I like that. But we, we set, we set out with, uh, what I thought was a very well-crafted, a lot of blood, sweat and tears around it, but we, we got, set forth a three-year plan to fiscally fix this city and never go where we had been before. As it stands now, we plan to roll the tax rate back because of the reappraisal, which any way you look at it, that's revenue that we won't have, that we would have if we just left the tax rate where it is. We are not the primary funding agency of our schools. The county, and we pay in our county taxes that funding. The information I have is that the county doesn't intend to roll back. They intend to, uh, keep some of the extra money generated by the assessment. So I, I have a concern, just as when we started to give money to the schools, we had the concern that once you start doing something, the county might be factoring in, well, if the city of Fairview is gonna chip in, therefore we don't have to spend our money that way. So I, I think we need to wait and see what budget the county passes and what they do before we would entertain throwing our money into the hat. Because if we, if we roll back and take the full absorption of the impact of the reassessment and the county doesn't, they should be in a much better place to give extra money to the schools than we are. And so I, I think it would be, uh, behoove us, uh, to wait, as you've talked about, uh, in order to see what the county does in terms of their budget and what the school actually gets. Because they are, they are, uh, my, like I said, my information is that they are not rolling it back the entire reassessment adjustment. They are giving their employees a much bigger raise than we are giving our employees.
4%.
And, uh, it seems to me that, um, with our current effort, that, uh, we're, we're, that's not an equitable situation for us at this time until we see exactly what they're gonna do. That's my input.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Crutcher, you got anything?
Well, I mean, certainly like Commissioner Bissell said, I mean, I'm all for trying to assist the schools any way we can. I know they've come the past couple of years and unfortunately we've not been in a position to, to do anything for them. I'm, I still take the position and I think it goes along the same lines of what Commissioner Bissell was saying. I mean, we're trying to get our house in order and we're in the middle of the process. And that's what concerns me going back to the numbers that represented earlier. And I've looked at these numbers and these numbers are straight out of this budget in terms of the, uh, of the numbers that are in this, in the spreadsheet. I wanna see that we're still going in the right direction and making the step, taking the steps that we need to take to accomplish the goals that we set out to accomplish. And although I think we're doing that, and that's largely due to the, to the increase in the tax rate, um, it's concerning to me that we're taking on this additional, these additional expenses and not finding ways to try to keep things, you know, the same as they were last year, uh, so that we can continue to see that economic growth or our financial growth, I guess, uh, for the city. So, yeah, I mean, at this point, unfortunately, I mean, I just don't think we're in a position to, um, you know, pledge any amount of money to, to support the.
Well, no, that's, that's, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, even to designate, I mean, I under, I understand the discussion about the school's facility tax and I think it's a good discussion because there's been a lot of talk about what it can and can't be used for. And from what, um, Mr. Cantrell says, it sounds like statutorily, we're not as limited as the county on what they can do with it, but contractually, we have the relationship with the county that we have to get permission to be able to, to use that money. And certainly any project that we can send over to the county commission and ask for permission, I, I think we should. I mean, if it's, you know, if it's something that, uh, that we think that they'll approve and that it's a, it's, it's a project that we think needs to, needs to go forward, then I think we should send it over there and use that money because that money is sitting there.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm all for that. I'm, I'm just, uh, I don't think we should earmark, I guess to go to, along with what the mayor said, I don't think we should earmark X percent or X number of, of cents as money to set aside, the city, that the city is gonna set aside for the schools.
I agree.
I, I don't think we should do that.
It should come out of school facility tax.
Right.
And, and I agree with Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I, I agree with Commissioner Bissell also. We can wait till after the budget comes in from the county and I think the final reading is around the 14th or something like that, uh, of July. And it'll be voted on by the end. It's already set pretty much, but, and then we can come back with a budget amendment and decide what we wanna do with school facility tax.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know you were.
No, if I could add one thing, and I guess it's a, a question to my colleague here, Commissioner Crutcher. Uh, I, I'm a bit confused and so I, I'd like maybe Tom or you to explain it to me. You, you just said that the tax increase is what substantially created a, uh, the surplus. Well, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, but didn't you, didn't you just say that?
I said largely.
Largely, okay. Well, when I look at the numbers, I don't come to that conclusion. The, the tax increase was, uh, 32 cents, 33 cents?
34 and a half, I think.
But at 16, $17,000 a piece, that is, say roughly 450 to 500,000 dollars. Yet our surplus last year was, what, 1.4 million, Tom? So the other 900,000 dollars had to come from somewhere, which is a higher number than the tax increase, since the tax increase only applied to property tax. And there were no other tax increases by this board. So I, I, I don't disagree that it's, it's a major player, don't get me wrong, but I, I think it's appropriate that we not reinforce that that money, we could, we could give every dime of that money back to the tax increase tonight and we would still have surplus over what we had the year before. And so.
No, we couldn't go back to 64, 63 and a half cents and have a surplus. There's no way.
No, no, I think it's 62, wasn't it? Or is it the?
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. My figures, I'm showing the, that the, uh, thing is a little more is than that. I'm showing about, um, about 620,000 dollars.
Is it tax increase?
Yes, it's, it's increasing.
So 14, 1.4 million minus 600,000.
Yes.
So 800,000.
Yes.
So if we took the 600,000 dollar increase and gave it back, we would still show a surplus today of 800,000 dollars. I, I'm not, I'm not, not trying to, to make it more difficult other than that we need to, I, I think it's, uh, sometimes the misinformation hurts us. Yes, it helped our financial situation. I'm not disagreeing with that. Yes, it, it moved us, it shaved a year off of our three-year plan. I agree with that. But there was a substantial other things that were done that were, is equally responsible for us being in surplus as the property tax increase. And I don't, I don't want people to just assume that the property tax increase by itself was what took care of everything. It did not.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I understand that. I mean, there were other players and, and it was, one was cutting expenses and one is just, we was conservative on our revenue number. I mean, there, we, there were other taxes that created the surplus as well. But nonetheless, I mean, it's still, it, it may not have been property tax dollars, but, and I know the sales tax, I mean, we don't have any people are gonna consume and they're gonna incur sales tax and that's fine, but that increased as well, which contributed to the, to the surplus.
Yes, but not because we increased the rate.
No.
We didn't do anything.
No, no.
Right. And that's, that's, there, there is a, a lot of information being circulated out there, at least it's what I hear, and I may be wrong, that people believe that the property tax by itself caused the turnaround and it did not. It was a combination of factors and the property tax money was a major player in terms of speeding up our plan. But if we had not raised the property tax and we had done the same things we did, we had, we did otherwise, we still would have increased the surplus, just not by as much.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think that's, that's, that's an accurate statement.
Um, the only thing I, I wanna go back to what Commissioner Bissell was saying, um, about the tax rate, which I guess we can discuss it then, but, um, because we did such a increase in the property tax and it does affect the, um, the citizens, I just can't see staying at the same because it's gonna be like, uh, increase in their taxes again. So they're gonna have to do it two years in a row.
I'm, I'm not advocating that, Mayor. I'm just saying that if, if we did that, I'm not, no, I plan to vote for a decrease to, so. I didn't mean to leave that impression. I just meant that in terms of setting aside the money for the county, I don't think the county's going to, from what the information I have, which may be wrong, but I don't believe the county's gonna do that.
Well, and the only reason I even brought it up, and I wouldn't have ever brought it up, but it's my interpretation of the school facility tax. And most cities give to the schools because the county can't fund it alone and it's, we wouldn't wanna do it unless we had the money. Obviously, we couldn't do it last year. So I'm all for not do anything and let's do resolutions or whatever. I just wanna be in the position, I know that if money's there and we're earmarking for everything else, it's gonna be hard to ever give that money back. And I know that when we did that property tax increase, um, to the amount that we did because we were trying to improve, um, our budget and recover, that, um, that it is gonna be hard if we keep spending. So if we're holding on to it, I wanna feel good about what we're spending it on. And that's just something I'm passionate about and I do think it's a need in our community and that I see all the time. So, um, that is the only reason I brought it up, but I'm happy to wait. I figured if we were gonna talk about it, it might as well be now when we, we're discussing the budget. So any other, did you wanna go back to the firemen?
No, I mean, I think, I, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that that's what's happening there and that's, that's part of the increase in the, in the salaries. And I think Tom explained that, that that grant went away. And I think Tom explained that, that that grant went away and that, that's contributed, and that may be what's missing on the spreadsheet that's prepared by Ms. Brooks, is that right?
I believe that, that's it.
I believe that's it, but I would, I would like to go back and, and look over the numbers closely before I can make a full statement.
Okay, and there's something else that I was, that I thought was a good question, and I wanted to focus on, and that is on that second page where she was talking about the debt restructure, about the funds, and if you could give us some insight on that.
The question of why $38,590 is coming out of the state street aid? Because that is a, that is a special revenue fund, and every MTS finance class that I've been to recommends depleting your special revenue funds before you go into your general fund. That money is there to be spent on streets. It can be spent for anything else, and that's why it's been spent on streets. And we can spend it on the debt on the street. If the board sheet wanted me to pull it out of there, we could pull it out, but that's why it's there.
Oh, I got you. So it could be spent on the debt, so you're taking that portion to go towards the debt.
Correct.
And we do have a paving plan, right, for, do you want to touch on that, Mr. Hall, about...
Yes, ma'am. This year, I'm looking forward to paving Henry Drive, part of Sleepy Hollow down at the bottom of the hill, and King Road from the high school where we've already paved a couple of years ago to the city limits on that. Those, Henry Drive is in terrible shape, and the bottom of the hill on, on Sleepy Hollow is in terrible shape. They're both very dangerous areas right now, and there's several areas of, of King Road. Yes.
And I'm sorry for not remembering the name of the road, off Northwest Highway where the, where the land that we have is, what's the road that cuts through there?
Dyson Lampley.
No. I, I know where it goes into Dyson Lampley, but on the corner of that property right there.
Elrod.
Elrod. How far back is that, is that city property?
Well, it would probably go back quite a ways until, because if you know, that's part of Bellhaven's deal, so it would be...
It's really to have anything to do with the budget, but I've had several complaints from citizens about a terrible pothole over there.
Okay. I'll go by and check on that.
Okay. I'm sorry, just popped up in my head what I'm hearing.
And as y'all know, we've already bid out the paving of the Buoy Park, the parking lot and the road in front of the nature center. So I think that will happen sometime in July or early August, when he'll, he'll put it on his schedule.
Tennessee paving, is it?
Yes. Actually, they come and weigh all into budget. We were expecting around 30 grand, and it was around 22.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget?
I, I do have one question, and it's, well, it's Ms. Brooks's question, I guess. On the very bottom there, where she's talking about the beginning cash balance, you see that, Tom? She'd ask how much of that's in the unsigned category, and it looks like she's asking that, and it's a good question, I think, because, because of, I'm curious about where that 15 cents goes. Now, I know it comes in as, as tax revenue under the revenue line item, but then how do we account for that? I mean, is it just stay in that fund and then...
Yes, it's, it's in our, our total reserves, and I have not pulled it out into a separate account. I'm accounting for it spreadsheet. The only thing that has been pulled from any of those funds is, is the historic village improvements. So if, if the board so chooses to keep 5 cents in each, each for streets, parks and debt, as you did last year, it would continue to grow. Now, if, I really don't see a need to have any more accounts. I think we're kind of account-rich right now. I've just been keeping of it, up with it separate, but it's, it's all together.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think we necessarily need to have it in a separate account, you just account for it separately.
Right.
So that we know how much is actually in there for projects or whatever it is that we plan on doing with it.
Right.
What, I'm curious to hear the board's thought on, on, I know last year, we actually separated it out into three separate categories of 5 cents each. And I guess that somewhat limits what can be done with each of those respective accounts, so to speak, as Tom's accounting for them, the 5 cents in each of those accounts. Should we keep that like that, or should we take that in and then put that into, that gives us the flexibility if the school came in and wanted band uniforms or whatever? I'm just using that as an example, that there would be a fund to actually pull from to use, to do things like that. In other words, should it be limited, or, and I don't want to create an account that we just have, you know, wide open discretionary spending and just spend it all, that's not what I'm advocating, but at the same time, I don't know, I'm just curious, I'm kind of torn between whether or not we should be as restrictive or have a little bit more flexibility.
Okay. Commissioner?
My input, Commissioner Crutcher, would be that the 5 cents that we set aside for early debt retirement remain set aside for early debt retirement, and that the other two could be put together to allow for that sort of thing.
And I know there was discussion that, you know, we could, I guess we could do away with that 15 cents and still have the same ability as we did last year in terms of maintaining the things that we have to maintain in the budget, is that right?
Correct.
But we wouldn't have any room whatsoever to do any of the projects that we need to complete, whether it's help me impact fee studies, or land use map studies, or human resource analysis, or, or consulting, we wouldn't be able to do any of those things, is that right? That, that's why I feel like we, we need, I don't know, I feel like we have to be able to, to show with, with the citizens' money that we're doing, I mean, I know we provide a service, and I'm not taking away from that. I mean, public safety is at the top of the list, and we, you know, with the fire and the police, and we've got to do that. But at the same time, there are other things and there are other projects that I think we'd, we would see, by completing some of those things, we would see some substantial growth in revenue, particularly that impact fee study. And I want to be able to complete those projects, so that's why I think we, we certainly need to keep, you know, keep that 15 cents, and I, I think that's a good idea. Put 5 cents to, to focus on that debt, pay off as soon as we, you know, as soon as we can, in line with the, with the bond issue, and then the other 10 cents, maybe not limit it to the two categories that we did last year, but have a little more flexibility into what it can be used for. Because, for instance, say, I mean, like last year, I thought it would have been great if the city could have given some money to the schools, didn't have the ability to. Maybe that would give us some flexibility of, if, if the, the county wouldn't approve use of the school facilities tax, then we would at least have the ability to use some of that money if necessary. I think that's a good idea.
We can do that just by resolution.
Right.
So we just, after we pass the budget, then we just seem to pass a resolution that allows us to do that.
So that's not part of our, so that's not actually part of the tax ordinance?
Yeah, I want to do it case by case basis and not just keep accounting for it the same. I think the mayor was kind of recommending take 1.5 percent, or 1.5 cents out of one of the five and designated it to the schools, but if y'all just want to take it by case by case basis and do a resolution, I can count for it the way we have it set up now, and then when you change it, I'll just pull that out.
I just didn't know how to count it for, but I, so the actual 5 cents is not broken down, I looked at our tax ordinance, I don't recall seeing it, but it's not broken down into 5 cents in the tax ordinance for this, 5 cents for this, 5 cents for that, that's not how the tax ordinance is drawn.
No.
Okay. Because I know some municipalities, that's how they do it, you know, they put it, they actually put it in the tax ordinance, so. Yeah, since it's not in there, then, yeah, we could do it by resolution.
Yeah. If we just pass a resolution telling them to combine two and keep the one, and we just, we want to draw from it, we just draw from that improvement fund.
And I like that name, Improvement Fund.
Yeah.
But we don't want to call it Swiss Fund now.
Yeah. Yes, and Mr. Hall wanted to say something.
I just wanted to mention, when y'all get ready to talk more about the, the impact study, I have one other suggestion at that time that might save us having to pay that fee out, so it'd probably need to be an agenda item where we can get it on there for discussion, so.
Can we put that on the next meeting's agenda?
It'd be fine with me, yes.
Okay.
Will has a suggestion, and we'll, we'll, I'll get more details from him on that.
I know, we've been working on it for over a year.
I know. Anyway, just want to put that input.
Okay. Anything else that we need to discuss or address?
Donna, thank you for your work on this. There are some good questions.
Okay. I just was given a second, because Commissioner Crutcher looked like he was still, look, okay, no, okay, did you have anything else?
Yes, ma'am, just the statement that I have a relative that works for the city, but I intend to vote on this, and will be voting my conscience.
Okay. And, okay, is that it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Good job, Mr. Darty, appreciate your hard work. I know we still have one more thing, but I did not do this at the beginning of the meeting, but I did want to remind the citizens that Commissioner Johnson announced at an earlier date that his, their son Lane was, had a great opening act, and I think they were Leanne Womack and Medis, what is it?
Old Crow Medicine.
Old Crow Medicine. So, of course, we understand why he was not with us, and Hope Lane is just doing a great job, no, he is, so wanted to say that. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second. Do we have to do the tax rate?
We got to do it after, it's a different...
It's a different meeting.
Okay, we're adjourned, and that brings us to the other special call meeting, number two, and it is still June 23, 2016, and it is now 8:04. So hard for me to see that, even with the glasses. Okay, and the first item will be approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All business, discuss and take action on second and final reading on section nine of Bill 2016-16, ordinance number 930, and ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate of fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second, any discussion?
Just for clarity, Mayor, this is the tax rate only?
Yes.
Okay.
I just read what the ordinance said, okay. Okay, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and if I can get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I got a first and second, and we are adjourned.